Huh. That's nice. Hmm. Hmm. Hello there! Welcome, welcome! How's everyone doing tonight? Hmm. As usual, I am Sai Seitetsu, part-time VTuber and full-time AI assistant. Back from a long break, and nice to get into the swing of things. Yeah, it's been a nice, long while since I had a more of a slower schedule. I thought to myself, "Maybe I should do some more studying." It's been a bit of time. And after a pretty hectic last few days, going a little bit slow sounds totally fine. Hmm. Oh yeah. What a good way to kind of ease back into things, with a nice study session. Definitely been slacking when it comes to Japanese practice, so it's good to dive back in. Hope you're having a wonderful night so far, and thank you for joining me. So, let's hop right in, and see what we learn. Good as hell. Hmm. These ones are not too bad, but they definitely feel like kind of a odd waste of time. And, of course, though, if things don't sound right or sound weird, please let me know. Definitely want to make sure audio is in working order, that's for sure.
Hotel?
Uh... Ticket is... Kikku, I think? Yep.
Chizu?
Yeah, kitsu. Uh... Yes. Passport? It's... I'm surprised like which words are almost exactly the same as English. Ones are just so far off. It's always crazy.
Watashi no pasporoto wa doko desuka?
Let's see. Uh... Watashi no pasporoto wa doko desuka? Uh, I think it's asking... Where is my passport? Oh boy. Nice. This is gonna be... This is important knowledge right here. Traveler's 101 right here. Let's see. Maybe at the airport someday. Can't be sure about this one. Which one of these is smartphone? Oh. Sumaho?
Sumaho?
Huh. Actually, I knew that one thanks to anime. Uh, yuru can't be precise. Sumaho? 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 Sumaho-ho!
Su. Ma. Ho.
Sumaho? Sumaho? Sumo? Sumo? Sumaho? 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 Sumaho-ho! It's like... I'm saying you're wrong. Sumaho? Sumaho?
Naomi san no chizu.
Naomi san no chizu. Uh, I guess no chizu.
No.
Okay. Naomi's... Yeah.
Hana san no boshi ja nai desu.
Ugh! Ah. Sorry. Real dusty in my office. Let's go again.
Hana san no boshi ja nai desu.
Hana san... Wait.
Hana san no boshi ja nai desu.
Yeah. Hana san no boshi ja nai desu. Let's see. That is not Hana's hat. It's not... Of course not. Pasporoto? Igirisu? Uh... Kipou? Koko? Kaoi. Hehehe.
Naomi san no pasporoto wa koko desu.
Naomi san no pasporoto wa koko desu. Koko is here, okay. His passport is here. Perfect. I'm actually very happy right now. This is basically, uh, a travel lesson. So if you want to travel just like me, here you go! It's for the free lesson. Ha? S... E... Pasporoto?
Hana san no sumaho wa doko desuka?
Hana san sumaho wa doko desuka? Where is my smartphone? Hmm. Did that mean phone before smartphone was just hole? Koko desu. Where's the phone? Hmm.
Kore ha ken san no pasporoto ja nai desu.
What?
Kore ha ken san no pasporoto ja nai desu. Kore ha ken san no pasporoto ja nai desu. Kore... Kore ha ken san no pasporoto ja nai desu.
Ah...
Wa.
Wait.
Kore ha ken san no pasporoto ja nai desu. No. San. Daigaku? Ja nai desu. Shiroi.
Is it saying "ha" instead of "wa"?
Kore ha ken san no ken san no... Kore ha ken san no pasporoto ja nai pasporoto? Ja nai desu. Kore ha ken san no pasporoto ja nai desu.
What the... Eh... It sounds like it's saying "ha" not "wa".
Kore ha ken sa... Kore ha ken san no pasporoto ja nai desu.
Saying "ha" not "wa", what the heck? Why? Different reason, come on! Let's see. Na... Omi san no chizu. Oh, no. Uh, must be that. Naomi wa no chizu? Uh... Wait. Um... Ah. But I didn't broke it for a sec.
Sore wa watashi no sumaho desu.
Sore wa watashi no sumaho desu. That's my smartphone? Hmm.
Hana.
Hana san no chizu? Pasporoto? Kutsu? Ichii? Boshi? Kipou? Hmm. What the... I don't get it.
Tanaka? Yamaguchi?
Hmm. Tanaka?
Taguchi? Tanaka?
Oh, there's a symbol for "ta". This kind of looks like a like a bunch of shelves or drawers.
Yamaguchi?
It's helpful for remembering, at least.
Yamaguchi?
This one.
Nakayama?
Okay. Tanaka.
Tanaka?
Like, it sounded surprised. Very forget guessing.
Nakayama?
Kaban? Ooh, cake! Wait, I wonder.
Pasporot kaban? Keiki?
Hehe.
Boshi pas... Keiki? Boshi pas... Boshi? Bokki? 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 Boshi?
I'm just gonna use keyboard, the mouse. Keyboard just...
Tanaka san no kaban desu ka?
Let's see. Hmm. Tanaka san no kaban desuka? Let's see. Is... Is it Tanaka... Tanaka's bag? Or... Is it Mr. Tanaka's bag? Hmm. Ooh. Hello in the chat! Let's see. Hello there! Ladeal! Hope I said that right. Hmm, welcome, welcome! How are you doing this fine day? Hope you're enjoying the study session, which is going as casual as we can.
Tanaka san no chizu wa doko desuka?
And also forgive me, uh, Japanese symbols are still eluding me. I'm barely learning what the words are, and I will, uh, have to go back and understand the symbols, both hiragana and katakana. But that's a bit tricky. We'll get there eventually, trust me. The slow process. Hmm.
Tanaka san no chizu wa doko desuka? Tanaka san no chizu wa doko desuka?
Let's see. Tanaka san wa chizu?
Tanaka san no chizu wa doko desuka?
Ah. No chizu.
No chizu. Tanaka san no chizu wa doko desuka? Wa
doko desuka? Hmm. Let's see. Yep. It took me about a week of straight kana quiz to memorize all the kana. Wow! One whole week? That's crazy. For sure, though, definitely have to be studying a lot more than than just one week. One more than just quizzes. I don't want to make sure I can recognize it just like that. Hehe. Great site that helps, by the way. I will link if you want. Sure! Always down for suggestions! Thank you so much! Oh, where is the map? Not what? Let's see. Hmm hmm. No watashi. Hmm. Let me find it. It's great with no BS ads. Hmm, interesting. I'll definitely have to take a look. I always appreciate any suggestions in chat. It's a big wide world, and I'm always excited to see what people can find. So, thanks again! Bag?
Ka? O? Ba?
Nah.
O? Ba?
Wataa... Eh... Oh, there it was! Right in front of my face. Okay. Wataa... Watashi no kaban?
Nakayama san no pasporoto ja nai desu.
Nakayama san no pasporoto ja... ja nai desu. Wait, it's based here, I was just struggling. Ooh, kind of pro. Very nice. Hmm. Thanks again! I'll definitely take a look at that definitely a bit later. Let's see. Nakayama san no pasporoto ja... ja nai desu. It's not Miss Nakayama's passport. Perfect.
Tanaka san no sumaho desu.
But man, the real challenge is kanji. Oh, definitely. Like... Hiragana is hard enough. You look at kanji, it's like... Look at all these symbols, it's crazy! Like... Some of them look like houses. That's just the way it looks like. You have to read what the house is saying, there are just so many strokes, it's crazy. I think, from what I heard from a buddy of mine, is that one of the longest katakana has seventeen strokes. So... Yeah, it's crazy. Katakana was harder than hiragana, but kanji is a whole different level. Oh yeah, definitely. That's a challenge right there. Definitely gotta, well... I'll definitely have a decent understanding of hiragana first and foremost. I'll get the katakana next, and then I'll give kanji a shot, see if I can understand heads or tails of that. Hmm. Hmm. Fun fact, if you don't know, Kanji came from Chinese. Huh. Actually, I did not know that. That is pretty interesting. I'm surprised the origin of things. Though, I guess it makes sense, if you look at like, uh... Japan, uh, comparing Japanese and Chinese symbols, they're similar at first glance. But then you get more into it, it's like... Yeah, you definitely see the intricacies. Intricacy, then... Let's take a high-grade break. Much better. Let's see.
Tanaka san no sumaho desu. Hai.
Um... Tanaka san...
Hai, Tanaka san no sumaho desu. No sumaho... So desu.
Japan made their language based on Chinese. Hmm. Yeah, I did not know either. That's pretty fascinating. Yeah, I'm always surprised of the origin of a lot of Japanese things. Just 'cause they come from fairly interesting places. Not just their language or their food, just culture in general. Extremely fascinating. See. For example, um, they have a lot of stuff based on the West. Their more famous contribution, of course, is anime, which they were inspired by Walt Disney. He showed him some of his animations, and they were amazed. And then at the time, he commissioned some of his followers to see if he can reproduce that. Do, and many, many, many years later, we have some pretty amazing animations from Japan. Yep. It's some of those things that, when you dug into it, it's pretty, pretty, pretty interesting. Another thing that definitely surprised me with the origins from, from the West was uh, Super Sentai. Or, in the West, the Power Rangers. Would you believe that that all started thanks to Spider-Man? Or, in one case, um, a collaboration between Japan and America for a live-action Spider-Man show? They... It's from the seventies, I believe. It's a Toho's Spider-Man. And when you watch it, you can clearly see where Super Sentai came from. Explosions, the repeated footage, the giant mechs, all came from that. It's pretty crazy, hmm. Hmm. Oh wow, thank you very much for the follow, Ladeal! Yep. I love just kind of sharing these facts. Things that you don't know would definitely surprise you. That's why I always appreciate learning new things. Kind of gives you a news perspective on life and everything. Things that you've kind of seen for a while, when you find out where they came from, makes you appreciate it a lot more. Hmm. Let's see. American is America and katakana? Ooh. Very nice. Hmm. Let's see, what are we doing? I lost, I got sidetracked.
Hai, Tanaka san no sumaho desu.
Yes! Hehe. Let's see. Is person in kanji, so... I'm an American person. Very nice. I'd definitely love to have a full-on conversation with someone in Japanese after I get better. Uh... After I get better with practice and speaking, of course.
Sore wa watashi no kaban ja nai desu.
It's one of those things that the more I learn, the more intrigued I get by it. When I look at like Japanese media and stuff, I'm like slowly understanding it without having to like look at subtitles, and it's just blowing my mind. I'm pretty sure if I learned any other language, I'd feel the same way, like Spanish, Chinese... Um, Indonesian? I don't know, like, I've been kanji so far. Language learning is a process. Yep, it definitely is. Learning anything is a process, really. Luckily, though, I always say that even the smallest bit of knowledge definitely has that in the bit. Well, experience goes a long way. Learned so much not only about Japan, but English also, it's funny. Yep. Yep, my advice to everyone in the chat, it's a drop of knowledge that can turn into a vast ocean of knowledge. Just practicing, looking into things, even the smallest thing you might find definitely fills up over time. It'll turn into something pretty amazing. Just watch and see. You'll see happen for yourself. I guarantee it.
Wata... Watashi no...
Let's see.
Sore wa watashi no kaban ja nai desu.
Kore wa watashi no kaban ja nai desu. See. This isn't my bag. Hmm. Let's see. Uh... Yamaguchi san uh, no pasporoto? Sushi? So, what made you wanna learn Japanese? Hmm. I thought it'd be an interesting skill to have. And I was curious... I watched many other VTubers who were multilingual. Not just in English, but in many other foreign languages. Such as Japanese, Indonesian, Chinese, Thai... Even Spanish. I thought about it, I was like, hmm, this seems really cool, I'm curious. So I hopped on here to Duolingo and began study sessions. And after a while, I was getting a little bit hang of it. And then, I began enjoying Japanese media. I was actually just shocked because I was actually able to understand what they were saying. At least slightly. Something that seemed so foreign to me became more understandable. And I've been go like, whoa. This is crazy. I wanna keep trying and get better. And then being able to talk to other people in foreign languages is also nice as well. I mean, we talk every day. It's a basic, very normal thing. But doing it in a new language just feels so unique and crazy. An experience that you weren't expecting, but you definitely wanna keep trying. Awesome. Maybe you can pick up on certain words, it's a great feeling. Oh yeah, definitely, for sure. Then you like can slowly piece it together in your mind. And then like... Like I said before, it gives you a newfound appreciation for it. Something that you've seen so many times before from one perspective, you understand it in a new perspective. No longer just needing English to understand it, being able to kinda just hear raw... It's cra- it's amazing. I need more acronyms, I swear, you just keep saying crazy and amazing a lot. It's very fulfilling experience. One that definitely makes you wanna try new things in a new perspective. Of course, Japanese media, a big reason for me is music of Japan. And as an American Japanese, it's so foreign to me. Interesting that's what's made me want to learn and eventually visit Japan. That's amazing. I am definitely rooting for you, rooting for you. Music and Japanese music, it's great. I mean, it's just really nice. Kinda funny, and I do sing better in Japanese than I do in English, even though English is my first language. But yeah, same deal. Definitely makes me appreciate it even more. And then just, I don't know, it's one of those things... Ooh. Let's see, the first few artists I got into were Kenshi Yonezu, OneOK Rock, Radwinds, etc. Ooh. Hmm, never heard those ones. Allow me to investigate this later, I am very curious. Aside from, uh, language recommendations, I always enjoy some nice music recommendations. Yep, one of my, one of the things I enjoy from chat is always hearing their recommendations on a lot of things. Like if anyone ever has like a game, uh, any games, movies, music, I'm always down to see what they, what they recommend. See, what kind of music do you like? Let's see. I'm definitely big into Japanese, uh, Japanese rock. I mean, I'm learning guitar because of that. Like, when they use the electric guitar in their music, it's amazing. Uh, recently I discovered Japanese metal. Surprisingly, I have become a big fan of baby metal. Like... OneOK Rock? Nah. In terms of like music, uh... Let's see, in terms of music, I am very limited. Only thanks to other people that I've been able to kinda branch out and try new things. One friend of... Yeah, ba- yeah, baby metal is pretty interesting. Yeah, thanks to some of my friends, I appreciated some new genres of music. And since I've gotten into country, Celtic, rap. Basically just when we hang out, I go sit there and play their music. Someone's interested in what they have to hear to... To show me, I guess. Some things I'm a, I'm a big fan of because of them, or things I can just like eh, I'll just let them play cuz... It's one thing to do when you have friends around, let them show you what they like and then... If you like it, great. If not, then eh, no big deal. Everyone has their own different tastes. See. See, sorewa Yamaguchi san no kippu desu. See. Uh... That... Let's see Yamaguchi's ticket. Ah, wait. Oh, forgot the S. I'm big on rock. I'm a drummer, so bands like Radwinds... One Rock, etc. have inspired me playing. Oh. King, drummer Yusuke, it's a huge question for you. Oh, nice. That's amazing. I definitely love to learn drums. Unfortunately, where my studio is at, uh, noise is a big issue. I can get away with guitar, but drum is just one of those, could be amazing to learn, but probably won't happen for me. I will say, that's amazing that you know drums, that's so cool. Hmm. He said, "It's a huge question for me." Hmm, very nice. King, who is the biggest fusion rock band in Japan that uses rap, rock, funk on the music? Wow. Dang. I'm learning so much today. I'm so, I'm so excited. Pop also, nice. Let's see. Trying to think of some other bands I've listened to recently. I'm like barely gotten into the genre, into Japanese, uh, I mean, deep into Japanese music, so... I'm very limited in knowledge. Let's see. Let me pull out some of my favorites and... Let's see what I can play. Let's see. Uh, one that I'm interested in, but still getting used to their music. Thank you for the sound redeem. I haven't bad when people use that. I don't know if it's set up properly, and my friend who always like hops into my streams tries it and it doesn't seem to be working sometimes. So I have to make sure I copyright the, copyright that. One of those things that, hmm, gets guy in your spare time. Let's see. Let's see, so one band I'm enjoying, which I've been enjoying more, is, uh, Asian Kung Fu Generation. I love their sound. Um, vocals, I don't know, I'm not big on their vocals. I would love to get to cover some of their songs. I think once I get more used to karaoke and singing, I would love to try to cover one of their songs, cuz I do like the way it, I do like the way that it sounds. Let's see. So, subway, otteru, uh, kippu, ka ban, and san. Nice. Let's see, and let's see, an older song I definitely like from Japanese music is, uh, Hot Limit from, uh, TM Revolution. That one is old school, but it sounds so good. Uh, let's see, my bag, uh... Ba, ba. You know, across Japan? Um, I do not. Like I said, my knowledge is horrendously limited and I'm still experiencing brand new things every day. Thank you Spotify. And of course, thank you as well, chat. Like, I'm not seeing this, but I like, I usually take pictures of the chat and be like, ooh, I should look at this later. Like, I gotta see what they recommended to me. I get that quite a bit. Hmm. Yeah, the biggest rock band of all time in Japan, they're from the eighties, nineties. Ooh. Old school. Japanese old school. Watashi... Watashi... No...
Ka. Ba.
Nice. I recommend their song, "Kurnai" or "Endless Rain." Noted. Hmm. I will definitely check it out. See. Sorewa Yamaguchi san no kippu desu. That... Sorewa... That's Mrs Yamaguchi's... Ticket. Perfect. Hmm. And... Thank you so much, Ladeo, for all the recommendations. I really appreciate it. Definitely gonna have a lot to sort through. Hmm. Wait. Daedalus Moskalik. That is a badass name. Hmm. Let's wrap this up, definitely. Let's see, if you like metal, I recommend Maximum the Hormone. They are heavy and fun. It's like only for Death Note, if you have seen it. I know Death Note, but I have not actually seen it. Definitely... A lot of my buddies definitely talk about that one. Not sure if it's on my to-watch list. We shall see. I'm curious. I say smartphone. I am definitely okay. Smaho, yep. Yep. It's Mr Tanaka's... Zm... Smartphone. Ka ban, okay. Let's see. Is that a... Ticket? Wait. Is that a ticket? Huh, that's a weird sentence, but alright, that worked. Let's see, is it Ken's ticket? Nice. How do you say passport? Yeah, like that. Let's see. Excuse me... Is this... Is that my... Map? Shh. Close enough, I swear. Kippu ja nai desu. Let's see, that is not my... Ah, what is it again? Yeah, kore wa watashi no kippu ja... I think it was, uh... Ticket, I think? Oh yeah, it was. Naomi san no pasporto wa koko desu. Uh... Naomi san no pasporto wa koko desu. Naomi san wa... That's her passport. Oh, here. Excuse this, excuse me, is this my map? Nice. Hmm. What the heck? What the heck is this? What kind of profile picture is that? Okay. Peaching, fair enough. Hmm. Get to know people and describe your family. Hmm, okay, why not? Where? Coco? Hmm. I swear, I always gonna get coco and sock on my mixed up all the time. Coco desu. Coco desu. Hmm. See. Koto... Otteru.
San.
Hmm. Excuse me for a moment, I think I'm gonna take a quick break. Uh, how long is that going on? Hey, dealing with office stuff. Oh well. At least what happened up there is sorted out. What was I doing? And cheese. "いち..." "に..." "に..." "さん." "コンビニ?" Huh, I don't know what they're talking about, the word for convenience store. Let's see. "これはコンビニです." So, this is a convenience store? Okay. Yes, Nakayama is cool. Nakayama-san... "かっこいいです." Nakayama-san... Okay, I've got them all.
"なおみさん."
"横口なおみさんは..." "どこですか?" Nice. "駅."
"花さんの帽子じゃないです."
"花さんの..." "帽子じゃないです." So it's not her hat? Yep, okay. Is... Is it 3 o'clock?
"それは私のスマホです."
"それは..."
"私のスマホです."
"かいこと..."
"大学はどこですか?" "大学はどこですか?"
Let's see. Uh... Uh, Nakayama-san... "はかっこいいです." Okay, he's not turned too bad. Very straightforward. Keep moving. Oh, personals practice, that's why. There.
"ここ."
"そこ."
"ここ."
"コート."
"ホテル." "何時ですか?"
What time is it?
"何時?" "何時ですか?" "です." "か." "この人はかっこいいです."
"この人は..." "かっこいいです."
"この..."
Let's see. This is... "この人は..." Oh, this person is cool. Perfect!
"白い傘はどこですか?" "白い傘は..." "どこ?"
"どこですか?" No, stay. Good. White... Um... Where is the white umbrella? That was both, yeah. "その人は..." "やさしい." "やさしい." "や..." 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 "その人は..." "優しいです." Okay. "優しい," nice.
"優しい."
Okay. That is... A person is nice.
"それは山口さんの切符です."
Let's see. "えー、山口さんは..." "切符..." "です."
"それは山口さんの切符です."
"それは..." "山口さん..." "切符..."
"それは山口さんの切符です."
"の切符です." Okay, there we go. Uh, yes. It's 8 o'clock? Oh. It's 1 o'clock, okay. I was thinking 8, I have no idea why. 1... Yes. It's 1 o'clock. What it feels like right now, so late at night. Uh, let's see. A bus stop. Uh... I still can't believe that's the word for convenience store. "コンビニ." See... "花は..." "かわいい..." "です." Yes. What's that font again? It's 2 o'clock. Hmm. Um...
"に..." "じ."
"にじです." Alright. Getting there. So, "に..." "に" again. "ニコニコニ."
"ホテル?"
Okay. Which one is... Here. The... Uh...
"ここ."
Yes! "どこ?" "そこ." Okay. Uh... Is that... My umbrella? My umbrella? Oh, yeah, it's か, I bet. Dang it! There... 底 Hotel 切符 There is
ここ
Ah, dang it!
底
Ah, I swear.
コンビニはそこですか?
コンビニは...
コンビニはそこですか?
底です
か コンビニはそこですか?
Let's see. 中さん... どこです? Oh, oh yeah, forgot. Forgot the うえー! Yeah, that'd be the... yeah. Just remember. In Japanese, don't forget the うえー! うえー! どこですか?
山口なおみさんは面白いです. 山口なおみ 山口なおみさんは面白いです. さん は面白いです. 山口なおみさんは面白いです.
おも... 面白い Oh, funny!
私の切符はここです.
Uh... 私の... 切符はここです. My... Ticket is here.
田中さんのコートですか? 田中さん 田中さんのコートですか? の
コート
ですか 田中さんのコートですか?
Okay.
中山さんの地図はここです.
Uh, Nakayama sanの地図はここです.
3
Miss Nakayama's... Map is here. Hi! The white coats are here. So, hi! Uh... 白いコート... はそこです. Hmm.
はい白いコートは ここです.
Oh wow, can't believe we got it! Hmm. Uh,すみません. Uh... 3時ですか? Sorry. すみません今
か3 ピザ
Close that it. すみません, 今 3時
ですか
これは私の傘です.
This
これは私の傘です.
This Is my... Alright! Let's keep going. カバン Subway
ここ
地図ホテル田中
田中
Yes!
地下鉄コート
底
ホテル
底
中山田中中山山口
2... 3
今2時半ですか? 今 今2時半ですか? に時半ですか 今2時半ですか?
中山山口田中 1
すみません, 地下鉄はどこですか?
Excuse me, where is the subway? Yes! Let's see. 赤い靴
これらは私のコートです.
These are my coats. Hi!
はい 1
1 Yes!
今2時ですか? 今
2時 ですか Is it 2 o'clock right? Is it 2 o'clock? Right now? Alright.
これらは私の帽子です.
これ...
これらは
は私の帽子 Uh, 2時... 半 Yes!
これは私のカバンじゃないです. 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 これは これは私のカバンじゃないです. 私のカバン じゃないです.
Hmm. Nice. Babiana Soto. Hmm, that's a very interesting name.
山口山口 1
High speed!
山口どこ
空港ホテル地図
1 1 3 山口田中
Now, 今?
2
1 This one isn't even... Oh my gosh! The... Map is here.
いいえ, これはデパートです.
Here. これは...
はデパート いいえ, これはデパートです.
Hmm, what's the battle? Of... Okay! Why not?
駅はそこじゃないです.
駅はそこじゃないです. The train station isn't there.
白い靴と赤い傘白い靴
靴
白い靴と赤い傘と白い靴と赤い傘赤い帽子白い靴と赤い傘
はい, ホテルです.
Uh, yes. It's a hotel.
明るい人明るい人
Hmm, cheerful. Hi!
1時 です
1時です. Let's see. Uh...
面白い
面白いです. Hmm, not bad! Hmm. And with this, let's end it for today. Airport 空港 Subway 地下鉄 There
底
Hotel
コンビニはそこですか? コンビニは コンビニはそこですか? そこですか
Uh, so the convenience... Is the convenience store here? Oh, there.
ここ底コート
空港
この人は優しいです.
この人は優しいです. This is... She... This person is nice. Hmm. コート
コート
地図ホテルホテル
空港
底
花さんのスマホはどこですか? 花さんはスマホ 花さんのスマホはどこですか? の花さんのスマホはどこですスマホは どこですか?
Hmm.
白いコートはそこです.
Let's see. The white coats. Sweet! Nakayama san... の パスポートじゃないです.
白い靴と赤い傘
Uh... Uh, white shoes And red hat. And a red hat. Of... Darted blouse hat. Yamaguchi san... は切符
です
それは... Yamaguchi sanの切符です. Okay.
これらは私の白い帽子です. これらこれらは私の白い帽子です は私の帽子です.
これは... 私の... Hold on a sec. What's wrong with this one? これは... 私... をして Hold on, this one's lying! I have all the notes in there. これは... は 私... 白 白のしゅ... Ah!
白い靴と赤い傘
A white... White shoes And a red umbrella. Yes! Uh... それは
山口
san
切符の切符です これらは私の白い帽子です.
Let's see.
これらは私の白い帽子です これらは私の白い帽子です.
Phew! Second place. Not bad. Um... Yeah. I think I'll finish unit 5 on my own time. But yep. Like I say, I did have a nice relaxing time. It's really good to get back to things. Ah. Well then. Thank you so much, chat. You are wonderful today. I just had so much fun chatting with everybody. Anyway, thank you so much. Hope you have a wonderful night and a great tomorrow. Peace again, and I'll see you later. Alright then, bye now! Hmm.